I'm showing 1,800 hours if we can go ahead and start. Good evening. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the City of Placerville Planning Commission, April 16, 2019, to order. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance. All please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We have the roll call, please.
Chair Friend.
Here.
Vice Chair Keeney. Member Lupper.
Present.
Member List.
Present.
Member Rains.
Here.
We have a quorum. Before I get into the formal agenda, again, my apologies to my fellow commissioners and to the public for my unexcused absence earlier this month. No excuse, no reason. We have item one on the agenda is the consent calendar, which includes adoption of the agenda, adoption of the regular minutes, and adoption of a resolution 1903. The chair wishes to pull the minutes, please.
Okay. And I have a comment regarding item 1.3.
Okay. So, the chair will entertain a motion on adopting the agenda.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, there we go. And then, just for all members, make sure that when you vote or speak that you use your microphone. All right. So then that'll move us to item two. Items pulled from the consent calendar. I'll begin with the regular minutes. "I just happened to catch the adjournment was by myself who was not here." I believe it says adjournment Chair Friend adjourned at 6:50 to the regular meeting of April 16. Happy to take credit, but...
My copy says Chris Connect. I perhaps can explain. I think when the packets went out, yes, I noticed that as well. It's not a substantive change. I did correct the record.
Gotcha.
It correctly reflects that Vice Chair Keeney announced the adjournment at 6:50 PM.
Fair enough. I deserve to have a document such as this. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
And then item 1.3. Andrew?
Yes, on the spirit of type of graphical errors and other things, staff did notice there was a misspelling in the resolution of intent. The word "further" is how it's... It's "further," so be it further resolved. So I provided you a copy, a fresh copy of that draft resolution for you with that corrected word.
Terrific.
Inserted.
This is not subject to a public hearing. I believe this was discussed...
But anybody from the public can comment on any item on the agenda.
Okay, correct. So we should not take action on this until we've taken comment, or...
You could open up if the public does wish to speak on item 1.3.
Okay. Given how the agenda is structured this evening, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to item 1.3, the resolution 2019-01?
Kirk Smith of Placerville. This is on 1.3, I understand?
Yes, sir.
And what's the reason for this kind of resolution? What's wrong with the methods you have so far? I guess the other question I had was the language that says "consistent with the Secretary of Interior's guidelines." And in the past, I understood that the Historic Advisory Committee made them mandatory, and the city made them mandatory. And so what does "consistent with" mean? The second thing is to just suggest write brochures, just in case it's of some interest on windows, because that's one of the ways that this has been addressed in the past, is you had some buildings in historic areas and they wanted to change them to vinyl windows. But the thing to point out is if I knew eight years ago when my mother and I restored a 100-year-old house, if I knew then what I know now, I would have done it differently. We were told by the contractor that the law requires that there be vinyl double-triple pane windows. But right now, those are available in any shape that you can imagine. So any historic house in Placerville has windows that can be replaced with double-triple pane windows that look exactly like what was done before. So, for first 100 years, you'd go to the hardware store and buy a pane of glass, and they were precut in one square foot or two square feet. So if a piece of glass broke, you'd replace it with just one window pane. And sometimes, these decisions in the past is you replace the whole window to a modern look, when they're available in wood frame, vinyl, aluminum, and the wood is just as the same insulation qualities as vinyl. So these are available if you find it helpful.
Thank you for those comments. Does anyone else in the audience have any comments on this item? I'm going to request that staff, for the benefit of the chair and possibly the newer member, refresh my memory that the commission had asked for this to the extent that a lot of the site reviews that we've done have been... They really sent this... Distilled down, I'll use the correct term, they distilled down to administrative discretion, if I remember correctly. We wanted to give staff the ability to look at these things and not require the applicant to have to go through the formal process. Is that a reasonable recapture of why we're at this place?
Generally speaking, that's correct. This was a couple of years ago.
Right.
And at the last meeting, I brought forward an item to discuss this matter, because the records don't reflect an action taken by the commission back, and I think it was 2014, directing staff to move forward with either formal changes to the code or really much of anything else. So having received some inquiries about historic district review, and one of the, I think, members, not members, but one of the applicants at the time bought a new property and is about to go through this process, he inquired about that status and wondered if anything had changed. And so I brought that back at the last meeting on the second, and this body directed staff to bring back a resolution of intent to move forward, to initiate the changes. So that process will, if you agree to this resolution, then it directs staff to prepare changes to the code, and that would become public hearings in front of this body and, of course, city council, who serves as the legislative body, and they would... They have the authority to adopt changes to city code. So there would be opportunities for public comment. This particular request tonight is just to authorize staff to move forward.
Okay. So this is, just to be very, very clear, adoption of the resolution does not change the process that we're using now.
No.
It gives staff the allowance and directs them to actually prepare the necessary amendments. And then I think that some of the concerns perhaps that we heard a moment ago under public comment could be addressed through the amendment process, having an opportunity to see what it is exactly that we're planning to do and how we're planning to do it. The resolution doesn't cover that. It's simply directing staff to go ahead and proceed.
That's correct.
Okay. Any questions of the commissioners to staff? Okay. Can I have a motion to adopt the resolution 2019-01?
I move that we adopt it with one correction that was presented tonight, the draft.
Thank you. I have a second?
I'll second then.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay. Moving on then to item number three. These are items of interest to the public that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience this evening that wishes to address the commission for an item that is not on our agenda?
Sue Rodman, resident of Placerville.
Good evening.
And I would like to know and like to ask if our planning commission could tackle the idea of tiny houses. They seem like a really good idea for people who are... Find themselves without the ability to buy one of our extremely high-priced houses in Placerville. But right now, I understand, there isn't a place in Placerville where you could put a tiny house. So I would like to recommend that the planning commission tackle figuring out if there aren't some places that tiny houses could be allowed for our city.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to bring something up to the commission that is not on the agenda this evening? All right. Seeing none. Item four, communications. Aside from the one communication we appear to have regarding item five on the agenda, are there any other communications? Andrew?
No.
Okay. Terrific. Dispensing then with item number four. Item number five is a public hearing. This is 3192 Big Cut Road. This is a variance request to allow a 10-foot front yard setback where 20 feet is required in the R2 low-density multifamily residential zone district in the city. And I believe, Andrew, you have the staff report?
Yes, I do. The property owners, Joni and Martin Vasquez, own and live in a three-unit multifamily development. This property has three addresses due to the three units on the property, 3192 Big Cut Road, 281A Phillips Court, and 281B Phillips Court. The parcel is slightly less than a half an acre in size and has frontage along Big Cut Road, Phillips Court, and the cul-de-sac end of Benham Court. The parcel was created by Parcelback... Excuse me, back in 2006, and it is irregularly shaped. The existing zoning for this parcel and those parcels located north and east along the Benham Court neighborhood are all zoned R2, which is a low-density multifamily residential designation. Staff determined the front side and rear yards for this irregularly shaped parcel under its authority per Section H of City Code Section 1043. Parcel slope is generally from Big Cut Road located to the south towards Big Cut... Excuse me, towards Benham Court located to the north. The undeveloped portion of the current site is to the north towards Benham Court. This portion of the site is greater than 30% of slope. To avoid extensive site grading necessary to provide access off Benham Court, the front yard and its 20-foot minimum setback is that which faces Benham Court. The backyard and its 15-foot setback is that which faces Phillips Court and Big Cut Road. This yard orientation allowed the developer of the site, Dick Clayton, to design and plan the site to utilize the less steep... Steeper portions of the lot, which are along Big Cut Road and Phillips Court, for the placement of the residential structures and vehicle access. Site development consists of one single-family residence, a detached second unit, or ADU as we call them now. In 2007, a hobby and game room was also built, as well as a garage, driveway, and curb gutter and sidewalk along Phillips Court. Again, those were built in 2007. In 2015, Mr. Clayton brought before the planning commission a request to convert the hobby and game room to a third unit, and that was under approval under Site Plan Review 15-01. The applicants would like to extend their existing front deck along the north, building elevation, indicated in their applicant submittal package, provided as Attachment A. And that extension would go into the 20-foot front yard setback, as much as 10 feet. The variance request would allow a 10-foot front yard setback where 20 feet is required under the R2 zone. The deck addition would allow greater enjoyment of their steep yard, where other parcels in the Benham Court neighborhood do not have such steep front yard orientations or conditions, as these neighborhood parcels were pad graded as part of their construction in the 1990s and early 2000s. The commission's authority under city code for variance requests lies within Section 1031 and Section 1035, as you are entrusted to act upon all variance applications. Variance approval is necessary for the proposed construction in that it would, as I mentioned, encroach into the front yard setback of the lot. The commission may grant variances for the terms of the zoning regulations only when there are special circumstances applicable to the property, that the strict application of the zoning ordinance deprives such property of the privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity. These circumstances include property size, shape, topography, location, and surroundings. To approve any variance request, the planning commission must make findings. Number one, that the granting of the request would not constitute a special privilege not enjoyed by others in the vicinity. Number two, the granting will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. And number three, the granting of the variance would not injure property or improvements in the vicinity of the site. This request is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act per Guideline Section 15305A, in that minor lot line adjustments and side yard and setback variances not resulting in the creation of any new parcel qualify for this exemption. The proposed project requests a variance, again, from the 20-foot front yard setback to as little as 10 feet. And this variance would not create a new parcel. One public comment on this variance request was received on April 5 from Susan Rodman via email, and she addresses landslide and fire safety concerns. This comment was received, again, after the public release of the planning commission packet, and a copy of her email was provided to you prior to the meeting tonight. Based on information provided in the public record, including the front yard parcel slope site circumstances that applies to the applicant's parcel, but not the existing Benham Court neighborhood parcels, also located in the R2 zone, staff believes the commission can make the findings prepared that justify the granting of the variance. These findings include the variance request qualifies for the categorical exemption I previously described under Section 15303A of the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines. And finally, staff recommends the commission take the action laid out on pages four and five, make the required findings, and then conditionally approve variance 1901, requiring that the rights granted under this authority, if approved, they must exercise that authority by obtaining a construction permit from the Development Services Department within 18 months. Mr. Chairman, the applicants are in the audience this evening, and that concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Andrew. Any questions of staff, by commissioners? All right. Seeing none. Our process is just a public hearing. Generally, we'll invite the applicant to address the commission if they so choose. You're not obligated to. But the commissioners may have some questions for you. Thank you for coming.
Hi, I'm Martin Vaskas, or they call me Marty Vaskas. My wife, Joni, have 44 years. The reason that we want to like to have this deck is that we have a large family. We have 16 grandchildren from the Bay Area, and they do visit, and we want them to have a place that's safe for them. And if you notice going up Big Cut Road, our house dips down within 15 feet off the road. You might have seen that. And it doesn't feel safe. And it's... We have a reason for that, because we had a tragedy in our family some years back. I'm sorry, it was my wife's mother. She was cleaning in the driveway, same kind of grade, same kind of slant, and the neighbor had a upholstery van full of water, and the transmission had went out, so he had it towed up the street. And anyway, it broke loose. It came down the street while she was sweeping, and... I'm sorry. It ran over her and killed her. And there's a newspaper report that also mentions that she was a 9/11 survivor, where she actually helped the firemen in 9/11, and a first responder, helping the firemen to... Just to get an idea who she was, and she was a missionary too, and she was very strong in helping people learn the Bible. And so she was a very quality person, a matriarch of our family. And so that's why it's one of our concerns, of safety and having the deck where we can have our kids. And because I've seen roads like that, even in the wintertime when the snow is there, cars were kind of sliding, and there's no guardrail. It could actually roll off and actually run into our house. And so this is one of the main reasons why we would like to have this deck.
And I was just going to mention too that when we had the survey done on the property, two of the things that we found out, we thought Big Cut Road was the front of our house all this time, and we found out that it was actually our backyard. And the only access we have is on Big Cut. We don't have a staircase going from our property down to the... I'm sorry, you got me all emotional. But we don't have a staircase going down to the port on Benham. And adding a deck would, of course, allow us some outdoor space to be able to enjoy. We just moved up to Placerville a few months ago, and from the Bay Area, and love it up here, and would really like to be able to enjoy the outdoors from our home. And the only area we have is the area off of Benham Court. We're spaced far enough away from our neighbors, and we've spoken to our neighbors in that port, who have expressed a lot of joy for us and have even said that they would love to come over and enjoy the deck with us. We're going to have to plant a big barbecue if it gets approved. And so that is the main purpose of having a deck, is to provide a safe place for our family, for the children, and to be able to enjoy the outdoors, because there is nowhere around our entire property to be able to do that right now. And as far as our neighbor, I know she's here today too, Susan, importance, number one for us is safety.
I'm sorry. I need to make sure you're speaking into the microphone.
Oh, okay. Number one importance for us, and I've told my husband too, is safety. And in building a deck, we are going to be hiring an engineer, and we have our contractor and our architect actually is here with us today too. And he... We're going to have it designed so that it's safe. That's number one priority for us, that it provides a safe area for our family, and that the way it is built and constructed will be done by professionals, of course, and it will have to be approved by the city. And as far as the landscaping goes, we've been keeping up that property. One of the other things we found out was the first front feet of our property behind that retaining wall we had the survey done is actually owned by the city. We didn't know that, because if that had been our property, we wouldn't even need a variance. So when we found out, which we've been maintaining the property, besides part of our neighbors too, we didn't know that wasn't ours either, we've been maintaining that whole area down below and will continue to do so. And of course, because we live in a fire hazard area, we plan on always maintaining it and keeping it up and not providing anything that's going to be a hazard to anybody in that area. I know one of the other concerns for the neighbor was having a fireproof deck. I don't know if that's something that's absolutely necessary. Does everybody who builds a deck in a home have to have it fireproof material? But we will be looking into all different types of material should it get approved. And hopefully, we're going to work with the best engineers and architect to be able to make it a safe area.
Please tell me you're not paying property taxes on the portion the city owns?
I hope not.
You might request a review of that.
When I looked on the map and I saw that seven-foot variance, I actually thought that was our property, and I thought it was a little strange. So I was actually weed-eating all the way down to the corner, and I'm sure the neighbors were probably happy about that.
Thank you. Any questions of the commissioners?
When I drove by there, I was impressed with the cedar tree. Is that going to be staying, or is it going to have to be removed?
That's going to stay.
That's good. Okay.
Yeah. I don't want any of the large trees cut down. We're going to design it so it's... The only thing that will be taken down is... There's a couple of almond trees that are smaller in size and a few little brush areas, but there's not a whole lot on that hill, and actually having a deck would probably help keep the weeds down. But we keep it up pretty well anyway. It's pretty steep.
Commissioner Rains, any questions? Commissioner Lupper, any questions? You said your architect is here, present?
Yes.
I had a question or two, if you don't mind coming to the podium. And you may or may not know this, this is my edification, and I will have a question of staff that I forgot. Does this deck need to be engineered?
Correct. Yeah. It will be probably 12 feet or so in the air at the highest end. And so, yeah, the... For example, the posts that support it will have to have diagonal bracing. The footers that piers that are used for it will have to be dug down to bedrock, and actually, the bedrock even cut flat so that you're not trying to make it stick on the side hill. You've got it on a flat.
And that's something you would just have to do based upon the design features of the deck and how high it is, et cetera?
Correct.
Okay. And then I can assume this is going to be permitted and inspected, and there are building standards that apply, and everything's going to be met. So I figured that was a reasonable assumption.
And we just add that the deck is subject to a building permit, so they would submit plans with the engineering calculations that would be reviewed under Plan Check prior to a permit being issued to construct.
Okay. Terrific. And I think you already answered one of my other questions. You didn't have the home built. You've moved here recently.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Great. I don't have any additional questions. Any questions of commissioners? Okay. Well, thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to this project?
Sue Rodman. I am the neighbor at 3187 Big Cut. And I do remember when this home was built. And I think it required a variance then, just to build it so close to Big Cut Road. I think that entire property has slopes that are too steep, and that the city really does need an ordinance for slopes. This problem, really, when that house was built, was foreseeable. It's what I call a typical Southern California solution to building on slopes that you shouldn't build on in the first place because they're too steep. But now it's there, and I can agree with the new owners that they have no backyard. That kind of a slope doesn't allow a backyard. If this deck is approved, I think there do need to be some extra conditions, and I think the support footings and pilings need to extend into the bedrock, not just go to it. I think they need to drill down into the bedrock for landslide safety, and my suggestion would be rust-resistant steel supports to be fire-safe. And I didn't... There isn't such a thing as fireproof decking, but it needs to be the fire-resistant decking materials. And they need to manage it as defensible space, which it sounds like they plan to do, which I think is good for them. So I know that those recommendations will increase their cost, but if they refuse to do that, then I would say that the project should be denied. But I did drive past and looked at that slope and looked at the proposal, took it with me and said, "Okay, well, I can see why they would want to do this." And if they would continue to do their defensible space and use materials that are as fire-resistant as you can get, and put those supports all the way into the bedrock, I think we'll be okay, because that is definitely steep enough that it could slide. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak to the project?
May I address her concerns?
Sure. You're actually a subject matter expert, so we'll allow you to speak on this matter.
Okay. The deck will be engineered, and a civil engineer doesn't put his stamp on it unless he's very... They overbuild a good bit, and he'll be very confident that it isn't going to be sliding down the hill. And depending on how deep it is and what the rock under it, bedrock, is and so forth.
You mean the composition?
Yes. Yeah. As to what kind of measures are needed to ensure that there's no sliding and so forth from it. But another thing, okay, if I may also, when the house was built, they graded up from Big Cut. And at that... On that... Big Cut, and at that, on that section of the property, it was reasonably level. It wasn't the real steep part that we're talking about for this deck. And if you look at the topo map, you can see that it goes fairly flat, or at least not real steep, right away from the house, and then it drops down real steep. And so the house and so forth were all built in a relatively level, and certainly stable area.
All right. Thank you very much, appreciate that clarification. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak to this project? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and possible action. Comments or questions of commissioners? Commissioner Lepper?
I drove by the property as well, and noticed the steepness of the hills that we've obviously been discussing, and I think that the integrity of the hill is very important to be looked at, and will be looked at if this is approved, so with the statements made and with the facts at hand, I think it, it should work as long as it's done correctly.
Thank you. Commissioner, thank you. You know, we've had a number of projects come before us over the years, some as, as large developments, actually. I'm always far more favorable to projects that are tucked into the existing topography than coming in and mast pad grading, and I think we've had a couple that, that's exactly what the developer wanted to do. I think this actually kind of rewards the fact that they did not do that. We have, I have lots of friends and acquaintances that have property with a lot of vertical acreage, that is kind of the nature of Placerville. I think with the appropriate engineering standards and permits and, and materials, I really don't see a challenge. And I wasn't clear in some of the comments how the, because there's already an existing deck, how adding a deck, and it's not a, not a huge deck, would somehow increase the problems with, with fire safety. I think that's, that's always an issue when you live in where we live, regardless of what it has, I wasn't terribly concerned about that. The chair is favorable to the request, be happy to entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the recommendation to allow the variance in order to build the deck.
Okay, so just as, second?
I second.
All right. And so, as a, just a matter of form, what we would request that you do is to move the staff recommendation, and then to cite, I have my papers all over the place, if someone could find, yes, actually, we want to find the findings.
Okay.
Page five. So we have, actually, we have page four. You'll find page four, and we'll adopt the staff report. I'm gonna, this is not an official amendment to the motion, I'm simply restating what I believe the commissioner had planned to say.
Yes, thank you.
That we will, a motion to approve the variance request nineteen zero one, we will adopt the staff report as part of the public record, adopting the findings as specified on page four of the staff report, and approve with the recommendations as specified, Roman numeral three on page five. Something along those lines.
You want me to restate that, or you did?
That's up to you.
No, 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 no.
If you want practice.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that advice.
We have a motion and a second on the table, is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposition? Seeing none, the motion carries. This decision is appealable to the city council ten business days, I believe. Thank you very much, and good luck with your project. Okay, that moves us on then to, now, of course, I can't find my agenda. All right, then that brings us then to item six, matters from commissions and staff. Do any of the commissioners have any questions or items for staff? I do have one, it goes back to one of the comments we heard this evening in open comment about tiny houses, and I did see an article in the Mountain Democrat several months ago about a possible project, and I, it hasn't come before us, but I don't know, Pierre, if you're in a position to speak to not necessarily that project, but the concept of tiny houses in general? I don't mean to put you on the spot, if you want to defer it to our next meeting, that's fine, but it did come up, and I thought it was of interest.
No, I'd be happy to make some brief comments on that, Mr. Chairman. Staff did consider a project, it was, the project was considering tiny homes, trying to remember what was the name of the project. Urban Ground, I think, was the name of a, of a potential project, it was in the paper, it was in, I think, the local news, television news station, had a little article on it. It was a twenty-acre piece where the prospective buyers were interested in, in staff's analysis was a trailer park. So they were looking at taking a, these would be trailers, I believe they were looking at thirty-six sites where they would provide for the hookups. These were, these would be classified as recreational vehicles, they would be licensed by the Department of Motor Vehicles, and therefore, they are technically a recreational vehicle, and city code does not allow permanent dwelling units to, RVs to be permanent dwelling units. So therefore, we told the applicant that they could consider manufactured homes and do a mobile home park.
Why wouldn't they be, because I, and I believe, I don't know if there's a, pardon me for interrupting, I don't know if there's a definition for, for tiny houses. When I think of tiny house, I think of a little thing on a trailer, that you could trailer up someplace, and you could leave it for a long period of time with hookups, or you could, you know, travel around with it, I suppose. What's the, if it, if it's on hookups and peer foundation, how is it different from a mobile home?
A mobile home is on a permanent foundation.
Okay.
And manufactured homes are, are certified and by HUD, and the state of California has manufactured homes. State law precludes the ability of local government to prohibit manufactured homes in lieu of a stick-built house, standard stick-built type of house.
Okay.
So a tiny home, in, in staff's opinion, would be just something, a rather small stick-built house, that would be built in accordance with, with the California Building Code. The Building Code has been amended to allow what's called an equivalency unit, I think that's the term for it. And that, and those units are very, very small, but they, they still maintain under the code the minimum requirements for providing for, you know, a bathroom, a kitchen, all the other, you know, heat and access, and all those sort of things that would be required for any standard-sized house, where you're looking at six hundred square feet, or three thousand square feet, or maybe as small as four hundred square feet or less, as long as it meets the minimum requirements of the Building Code. So a manufactured home is just different because they're manufactured off-site, sometimes in, in, in two parts or more, and then they're reassembled on-site, but they're on a permanent foundation. So as opposed to a recreational vehicle, which is for temporary use only, and so staff would not allow for a trailer park for permanent dwelling units, and that was the difference here.
If somebody had, if somebody had a vacant parcel in a neighborhood, I'll just use the term neighborhood broadly speaking, a vacant parcel, or a house for whatever reason burned down or was destroyed, would somebody be allowed to bring in a tiny home trailer and park that in lieu of building something else, and, and hook up to sewer, maybe raise it up on, on, on blocks or something, and, and would that be allowed?
The city could allow that under a temporary use permit, and that would only be for temporary short-term purposes. Typically, you're probably looking at up to maybe six months, where a family is basically homeless because their house burned down, but they happen to have a recreational vehicle that survived the fire, or was parked elsewhere, or something of that nature. But again, it's for temporary purposes, so typically, you would see, and this is after consultation with the California Department of Housing and Community Development, they do define what an RV is, and typically, it's, it's permitted for seasonal. So sometimes you have, in farms, you have seasonal worker housing that can be in, in trailers. You have a situation like what happened in the town of Paradise, the particular staff person with HCD that, that, that we consulted with, happened to be up in the Chico area, inspecting a trailer park that was temporary in nature, but it was a, a place for some of the people that had lost their homes in, in the town of Paradise, where they get to live in a temporary basis. Also, in, in campgrounds, of course, campgrounds allow trailers, like, like a KOA campground or something in that nature, they're allowed on a short, short-term basis, and typically those campgrounds are for thirty days or less of stay. And then another circumstance could be other emergencies that may arise, such as the one that you pointed out. So those are usually the circumstances where RVs are permitted, but as a permanent dwelling, where that's where the person resides, they receive their mail, that's their permanent legal address, no, RVs are not permitted in that circumstance.
Okay, thank you, that was a very good discussion on that. Don't believe there's any other questions for staff, so reports from staff to commission, please.
Yeah, due to the lack of agendized items, we will not be having a meeting on May the seventh. We do anticipate a definite meeting on the twenty-first, and I don't know if the directory bus wants to, we will be having a presentation at that particular meeting, and the topic will be related to small cell facilities, wireless facility. We might have an additional item, if I can get the proposed draft amendments to the site plan review exemptions that the ROI tonight authorized staff to do, that possibly could, could come up at that meeting. So May twenty-first would be when we would adjourn to.
Question?
It's the small cell facilities regarding the 5G implementation of the different.
Pierre, do you want to answer that? Yes, in, in, in brief, the Federal Communications Commission has issued some regulations and has usurped the ability of local government to regulate what's called small cells, so these small cells are more numerous, they're in lieu of the larger towers, and they are as part of the 5G rollout, which is the next generation of cell service. And so, in, in essence, then, if a carrier wanted to come in and locate these small cells within public right-of-way, within a light standard, or a utility pole, then they have the ability to do that with very limited local government control over how to regulate the installation of those. So we've been working closely with both Verizon and AT&amp;T, they both intend on coming into the city and locating small cells. Staff is looking at putting together an ordinance to implement, and look at doing a master licensing agreement with some of the larger carriers. We're also looking at maybe putting some minimum design standards, especially with respect to, say, Main Street that has our decorative light standards, we want to make sure that if they're going to locate these small cells, that it maintains the integrity of, of, of the character of that Main Street without, you know, disrupting the whole purpose of putting in an expensive decorative light standard. So Verizon is going to be, be providing a presentation, and, and they're going to be providing a PowerPoint with examples, and it'll be an opportunity then for the planning commission to become more familiar with the whole issue before staff moves forward with some draft ordinances. Staff did bring the item before the city council, city council did already approve the resolution of intent to amend the zoning code, so any ordinances that, that staff puts together, the drafts are going to come before the planning commission first, so that then you can make your recommendation to the city council.
Great. Are you familiar with these, by any chance?
Partially, I mean, it's, it's happening a lot of places, and there's a lot of kind of, you know, some people are upset about having them located in certain places near their housing, things like that. I believe there's some lawsuits going on around it.
Right, because we've had a lot of, close to schools and that sort of thing, we've had a lot of, of, of projects, sometimes were rejected here, rejected by council. Visually, do we have any idea what these things look like? As you said, not like the, the big towers, supposedly.
Right, they're very, they're, they're much smaller, though they were a little bit larger than I was originally anticipating, so, and that's why we want to have this presentation with Verizon, prior to us even putting pen to paper and trying to come up with some draft ordinances. I think it's an opportunity for the planning commission to become more educated on the whole small cell issue. You can ask a lot of questions of, of Verizon, which is a major carrier, and of course, they are proposing to come into town, so I think that'll be a, a great opportunity just to become more educated, and of course, the public is, is welcome as well to come to listen to the presentation and also ask questions of the, of the presenter.
As one of my mentors once said, they are the icons of our age.
That's right. I remember that.
Mr. Painter?
Yeah, one, one more thing on the twenty-first, officer elections, we'll bring that back.
Yes.
Also, if it is the opinion of you for, do you want me to also agendize the overlook or look-through of the bylaws?
Boy, I always say, if there's somebody you don't like, put them on a bylaws committee. However, in deference to the newest member, fresh eyes, and actually, Commissioner Rains also still fairly new to the body, I'll say, I would say, go ahead and do it, because they may catch something that, I'll speak for myself, who've been around since dirt on this commission, have not seen or thought of, so.
Okay, consider that.
There's no objection to that.
I will put it on the agenda.
You will be here for that. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn?
Move.
We are adjourned. Seven forty-four, six forty-four, eighteen forty-four hours. That's forty-six here, but.